...of the town council to order. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you do the roll call, please? Here.
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 Next on the agenda is our approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 20th, 2024 regular meeting.
We have a second?
Second.
Does anyone have any corrections or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve the February 27th, 2024 special minute meetings.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Under chairman's correspondence, we had a couple of communications come in via the iPad. The first one was from Jersey Mike's telling us of their day of giving on March 27th for Make-A-Wish and inviting any council members to attend if they're able to do so. We had one from Mr. Mickle relative to the Board of Tax Review making some suggestions. And we had one relative to the appointments we made to the special committee, tax committee, the last one. We had approved Mr. Johnson as an independent and in reality, he is not. He's an unaffiliated voter. So that's a correction to our, to our minutes from the last time. And there is a ribbon-cobbing ceremony on April 25th at 1:30 to mark Braxton Manufacturing's 60th anniversary, and council members are invited to attend, but we need to RSVP if anyone's interested. And I'll make copies of these for other council members. Let's go on to subcommittees and reports. Mr. DeBono isn't here, but I don't believe ordinance has met.
Correct.
Mr. Attalick isn't here. Has Public Works met?
No.
No, they have not met, no report. Elderly tax relief?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. We move on to the town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I have two memos that I've written. One is in regards to some of the questions that we had at the last town council meeting regarding finance and software, and the other is a health fund and potential savings from the health insurance broker change. Just to give you an update, the Board of Education has gone forward and put out an RFQ, a request for qualifications for a new broker. During that process, Dr. Villanueva had included me in the interview process, and after some discussions, we see potential for savings from anywhere from $500,000 to $1 million considering commission changes and low-hanging fruit within the insurance program itself. So the Board of Education has already gone forward and changed brokers, and I think it's in the best interest of the town to follow them and stay together as a, as one organization. So we'll be making that decision to move forward with the new broker effective March 1st, and we will be separating from the current broker that we have. Moving forward, we, the Board of Education and the town will consider entering into a memo of understanding so that we actually understand the processes and the shared services and the shared responsibilities with the health fund. That will help for succession. At some point, Dr. Villanueva or myself may not be here, and they'll be able to refer to this document to understand what the intent of the agreement was. So we will work on that after, towards the, as we move through the budget process. I'm going to read directly from my memo because it, it's quite a bit, and I apologize, it's kind of long, but I think it addresses some of the concerns and some of the questions that were asked by the general public. So the Finance Department has maintained the same staff levels for over 30 years, despite facing a substantial increase in workload, notably due to the implementation of a new software system, federal reporting demands due to ARPA, increased reporting to the state of Connecticut, and the management and reporting for approximately $23 million in grants that have been secured and need to be managed through this administration. This transition of Infinite Visions, which I would refer to as IV software, began prior to the onset of COVID-19 and coincided with the changes in leadership, including transitions in the Finance Director role to Town Manager's positions. The integration of the new software initiated in June 2019 faced challenges exacerbated by subsequent changes in management. The original attempt to integrate to IV was scheduled to occur in the beginning of 2020 with an in-person setup and training. With the onset of COVID, staff was reduced to a minimum, and employees were scheduled to work on opposite days due to the pandemic through the fall of 2020. During the integration, IV closed their facilities and worked remotely, forcing Watertown to start the integration through remote access. As a reminder, in that time, remote access and Zoom meeting were not the norm for municipal workers. The initial setup of IV was completed remotely, which contributed to improper setup and training that quickly frustrated staff. As a point of fact, the integration, as with all proactive projects, are completed on top of daily activities of staff members. There was not an implementation team to implement and facilitate the work. Staff members continue to receive training and work with setup specialists to manage the changeover. Through discussions, IV recognized the importance of addressing the original setup and offered additional free setup and consultation time. During this time, management was working with staff to address deficiencies in understanding the change in process. Additionally, a third-party vendor was brought in to assist staff with cleanup efforts, yet inaccuracies persisted in the IV software. During the audit period spanning FY 2122, which is between July 2021 and to June 2022, discrepancies in cash balance reporting surfaced in September of 2022, ultimately revealing a significant $33 million accounting error in general fund cash accounts. Further investigations uncovered additional inaccuracies across various funds necessitating corrections to the accounting system. Consequently, the audit for FY 2122 was delayed and ultimately filed in March of 2023. The $33 million discrepancy primarily stemmed from errors in the posting of cash balances and bank reconciliation, with expenditure and revenue accounts being accurately recorded. Management responded by one-on-one discussions with staff and implemented additional training. Management's corrective actions in response to these challenges verified that errors were accounting errors. All monies were accounted for. Further discussion on this matter is limited due to its evolution into a personnel issue. Adjusting journal entries to balance FY 2122 were provided by auditors in April 2022, involving complex corrections across 28 different funds. Despite efforts to wrap up FY 2122 by April 2023, delays in the audit process affected the subsequent fiscal year FY 2223, requiring reactive measures rather than proactive planning. This process is carried over into the FY 2324 audit as well. Finance anticipates that all cleanup of accounts will be completed by the end of FY 2324. The impact of COVID-19 further compounded challenges, including acquiring the equipment and learning how to remote video conferencing, understanding the impact of an extensive use of credit cards, and adjustments to budget processes. The impact of the significant personnel changes within both the town and the Board of Education led to coordination issues and a disconnect between the two entities. Efforts have since been made to enhance communication and reconcile financial accounts between the town and the Board of Education, addressing concerns related to fund intermingling and reconciliation. Overall, the Finance Department has navigated a period of substantial change and increased workload, requiring ongoing efforts to streamline processes, document processes, and improve coordination between departments. In the forthcoming finance budget presentation, I propose outlining a succession plan to address the impending retirement of our Finance Director. To facilitate this transition smoothly, I've requested approximately $68,000 to retain Sue Zapone as a part-time employee to assist the Finance Department. With 30 years of experience across various roles within the Finance Department, Sue is uniquely positioned to support each member of the Finance Team during a nine-to-12-month period. Sue's continued presence will aid in the seamless handover to the new Finance Director while providing crucial assistance in addressing outstanding tasks, particularly those related to evaluating a potential transition to new financial software. This presents an opportunity to assess whether the Finance Department is sufficiently staffed by addressing cleaning up discrepancies and by utilizing appropriated software solutions in understanding those impacts. This can potentially save money through evaluation instead of resorting to hiring additional staff, which would be a recurring budgetary expense. Additionally, I've included a brief executive summary of the SWOT analysis conducted by the Finance Team regarding IV software for your review. The executive summary starts with a conclusion, and the SWOT analysis conducted on the use of Infinite Visions financial software in Watertown presents a multifaceted picture. While the software boasts strengths like adaptability and real-time data processing, it also reveals weaknesses and potential threats that pose significant challenges. These include its origins in educational institutions, which require complex workaround and contribute to user unfriendliness for the municipality. Moreover, challenges are exacerbated by concerns over succession planning, scalability issues, and the risks of budget overruns and staff turnover. While there are positive aspects to Infinite Visions software, particularly in its coordinated use with the Board of Education, the identified drawbacks, particularly its complexity, necessitate a thorough evaluation. The need for workarounds and associated costs emphasize the urgency of exploring alternative solutions. Although opportunities for optimization and enhanced training show promise, they demand immediate attention due to potential risk related to scalability, succession turnover, and operational efficiency. It's noteworthy that discussions with IV representatives at various trade shows have revealed that Watertown is not unique in encountering challenges with the software. Direct feedback from IV representatives underscores the reality. While some users may advocate for persisting with IV and addressing its intricacies, discussions around succession planning highlight that it may not be the most suitable software for the municipality in the long run. With numerous alternative platforms available, there is an opportunity to find a solution better aligned with Watertown needs and objectives. I'm going to spear you the recommendations. I will make sure this goes up online so I don't have to read it during the meeting because I do have more to report. By addressing these recommendations, Watertown can enhance financial management, operational efficiency, and community service delivery. During the last town council meeting, there were some points raised that I'd like to address for clarity. Firstly, it was noted that there may be an issue with the town reporting its revenue. The revenue reporting process is somewhat out of the town's control, as we rely on multiple agencies for revenue data, which affects our reporting timeline. As a point, March 4th is a deadline for the Board of Education to send their budget to the town in which the-
[inaudible]
As a point, March 4th is the deadline for the Board of Education to send their budget to the town in which the town relies on for reporting revenue. To address this moving forward, it's crucial to establish a clear timeline for when different parts of the budget will become available. This will help both council members and public anticipate when to expect certain information and hold staff accountable for timely reporting. I will ensure that this will be completed for next year's budget process and posted publicly. Regarding revenue from the state of Connecticut such as LoCIP, Town Road Aid, ECS, or PILOT, we typically receive these funds' numbers in February, but there's no set timeline for the delivery. Consequently, we've often left waiting, we're often left waiting to input these numbers as they come in. This can be frustrating for those awaiting this information, especially if they're unfamiliar with or forgetful of the process. By memorializing the timeline and providing detailed explanations, we can shed light on these issues. Additionally, the intention behind updating the council and the public on our issues with IV was meant to be a courtesy and keep stakeholders informed. It is important to recognize that with computer software, the adage "garbage in, garbage out" applies. If we don't address inaccuracies in the cash balances and bank reconciliations, switching software wouldn't necessarily resolve these issues. Therefore, we are currently focused on cleaning up our books to ensure a smooth transition if we choose to change software in the future. This cleanup process has resulted in finance operating in arrears temporarily, but it's necessary to ensure accurate and reliable financial data moving forward. I just want to highlight some of the softwares that I've talked through in the past and put on the record what they are used for and how we're going to move forward. So the institution of ClearGov software is designed to enhance transparency, accountability in the budget process by providing a user-friendly interface for all stakeholders. It is scheduled to be publicly available in March of 2024, with ongoing updates and improvements planned throughout the following year. With the rise of social media and the unchecked spread of potentially inaccurate information, ClearGov provides a platform for all citizens to gain a clearer understanding of the town's processes, policies, and procedures surrounding finance. Once this space is fully populated, we can then engage in discussions to identify areas for improvement from a starting point of actual ground zero. The implementation of ClearGov aims to simplify the budget process for staff members. Previously, budget creation involved multiple phases, placing a heavy burden on the Finance Department. With ClearGov, much of the budget creation can occur within the originating departments, reducing the data entry workload while ensuring accuracy for finance personnel. Once the budget gets approved by the public, we will then open the next budget process for department heads to openly work on their budgets throughout the year, alleviating the rush to meet deadlines. ClearGov offers valuable features, including the capability to capture concepts and maintain notes over time. This facilitates improved long-term planning and preserves historical data for future reference. Moreover, the software allows for backup documentation requests to be seamlessly integrated into the system, thereby saving time and ensuring a transparent audit trail. Additionally, ClearGov provides modules specifically designed to address personnel costs, assisting in understanding the impacts of contractual negotiations regarding salary. Furthermore, it offers functionality for tracking and reporting on capital improvement projects, and I'm sure you're all aware that we have quite a few of those. ClearGov is a standalone software specifically designed for budget creation and management. Its commitment to transparency is evident through features like the Digital Budget Book, which includes detailed explanations of line items, supporting documentation, budget policies, accounting definitions, demographic information, town history, budget process explanations, chart of account explanations, and there is more. The software seamlessly integrates with existing systems such as Infinite Visions to guarantee data accuracy and simplify the creation of quarterly financial updates mandated by our charter. In essence, ClearGov's objective is to enhance the budgeting process and efficiency for all stakeholders involved. Andrews Technology is software, our software is a time-in-attendance solution designed to handle approximately 65% of our current full-time and part-time payroll needs. Plans are underway to integrate the remaining 35% of staff into future software updates. Due to the complexities negotiated within each union contract, the payroll process has become intricate. We are presently in the testing phase of software implementation, having collaborated with Andrews Technology over the past eight months to establish rules and procedures. This collaborative effort has highlighted the need to simplify union nuances to streamline the payroll process. We have followed the recommended implementation process and have maintained the timeline through January. We have pushed back the testing and go-live date until March, April, to refocus on the budget and audit commitments. This is a build-out software that relies on staff's input and research. It's not a plug-and-play type software. Traditionally, all payroll tasks have been completely manual. Staff members submit paper timesheets to the respective managers or department heads for manual approval, after which the payroll team manually calculates totals and then inputs the data into the IV financial software. Andrews Technology enables employees to digitally sign in with their time reviewed and approved digitally by managers and department heads. The approved mathematically accurate report is then forwarded to payroll for review before being uploaded into the IV financial software for processing. Further, Andrews Technology offers features to track time off and facilitate digital approval process for staff, alleviating the manual process of tracking time off. This allows management to review reports and have oversight to track current staffing assignments without physically checking the workplace in the moment. Presently, it takes one and a half staff members, three and a half days, to process payroll manually. Implementing Andrews Technology is expected to reduce this processing time by more than half, allowing the payroll team to focus on other related tasks that they should be attending to. I'm getting closer to the end, I promise.
Good.
Qsend is also a software in which we've implemented. It's a software which is a customer relation management software designed to track various aspects such as issues, complaints, requests, tasks, and workload. This system automates the notification process by directing service requests to the appropriate individual responsible for handling or assigning the work. As we fully integrate the software, we plan to implement a system of responses to keep initial requesters informed of actions taken, updates, transfers, or service, of service, or task completions through automated emails, texts, and even phone calls. In cases where tasks are not completed within the designated timeframe set by the town, matters will be escalated to the next responsible person within the organization, including department heads and the town manager. While we continue to develop the system and assess its impact, we will eventually release an application for citizens to report issues throughout the town. However, we have chosen not to launch this app at this time to prevent overwhelming the Public Works Department with additional tasks related to road conditions. This centralized system allows management to quantify workload through extensive reporting. For example, in the past, reporting a blight issue in town involved multiple departments such as the Police Department, Building Department, and Public Works. Now citizens can initiate a blight notification on the town's website, and the system will route the complaint to the appropriate department based on the provided information. As an example, if the Police Department received a blight complaint better handled by highway, they can escalate the complaint to the highway through the system, alleviating additional collaborative work, thus saving time in response and workload. This tracking mechanism will enable management to quantify workload responsibilities and make informed decisions regarding service levels and staffing. It is important to note that Qsend is not integrated with our financial systems. However, we are integrating it with the permitting system, Municity, which is used by planning and zoning, the Building Department, engineering, assessors, fire marshal, and the Health Department. This integration allows information associated with these departments to be uploaded to Municity, ensuring that each property card is updated and noted. This centralization of information enables the town to manage building and permitting data more effectively and allows for better communication with the assessor's office to better understand and address changes for assessment purposes. Again, I apologize for this being so long. I will make sure that this is posted, and I hope those, that answers most of the questions surrounding our software and our issues with IV technology. Thank you.
Obviously, that took some time to put together. Thank you for, for doing that. Let's move on to new business.
I move to add two items under new business. Item one, consider a resolution regarding the roof replacement project at Watertown High School. Item two, consider resolution regarding the roof replacement at John Trumbull Primary School.
We have a motion. Do we have a second to add the two items?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Attorney Jessel, can you comment for us on this, please?
This is actually a somewhat simple matter. The resolutions that you passed at your last council meeting, having to do with those two roof projects, was sent up to the Department of Administrative Services to be considered for the grants that's going to offset the, the cost of these projects, and they actually rejected the resolutions. And it was basically because they want, they want the statement concerning the amount of the town's contribution to be an anticipated amount, because there could be items in the project that are not reimbursable. There's some fees from the State Board of Education, for example. There's a couple of other things that potentially won't be reimbursable. Not that they would be of great magnitude, but DAS wouldn't accept it. So essentially, what we just said is that it is anticipated that the local share will be approximately $2.1 million for the high school and $1.9 million for the John Trumbull School roof. And that is really the only change in those resolutions.
And those figures fall within the amount that was approved at bonding?
Insofar as what the numbers are, they're exactly the same. It's just that there may be some slight modification to that based on things that might not be reimbursable.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Attorney Jessel? Thank you. Okay, make the motion for the first one. Did we record a motion? In a second?
It was second. It'd be in a discussion. We didn't vote.
Yeah, we got to vote.
Right.
All those in favor of adding them?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, adding them has passed unanimously, and I'll make the motion for the person.
Gotcha. I move to approve the resolution regarding the roof replacement project at Watertown High School.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve regarding the roof replacement project at John Trumbull Primary School.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for that resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Now we move on to the Finance Department. Mr. Ramsey.
And we will continue with our budget presentations. Next on the list is Social Services.
This is just a presentation by department heads.
If he has any quick questions, Chairman, I can answer him quickly to him. I'm not going to, because he is so far along in the budget process, picking up if there's any questions I can help him with. budget process, picking up if there's any questions I can help him with.
Michael Ganim, Director of Parks, Recreation, Senior, and Social Services. It's an honor to present to you this evening the budgets for the following divisions. Parks, Recreation, Crestbrook Park, Senior, and Social Services. I would like to thank the department staff, the finance office, and the town manager for their attention to and assistance with the budget, both before my arrival and since. The QR codes that I distributed to you this evening will direct you to at your convenience a peruse of our, to peruse our programs, our offerings, and our special events, and our facilities. Where citizens are invited and encouraged to, via our contact tab, send us feedback and suggestions. One of the goals of the department is to enhance our branding and marketing. I believe when we are, when we are sharp and work together, be it as the divisions being presented tonight, or with other town departments, charitable foundations, and civic and community organizations, we need to tell those success, success stories. Crestbrook Golf Course is celebrating its 50th anniversary in 2025. The Parks and Recreation intends to market this occasion with an emphasis to cross-marketing with all of the divisions of the Parks, Recreation, Senior, and Social Service Departments, as well as the potential for economic development tie-ins. If you look at that slide there, in 2022, we had over 20,000 played rounds at Crestbrook Golf Course, and last year, the season, we ended up over 25,000 rounds played at Crestbrook Bear with me for a second. Oh, thank you. Number of registrations, this would be through our, our programs like our cooking classes, basketball, summer camps, recreation programs. Again, any of those QR codes or one of those QR codes will take you to the site so you can review the plethora of programs that we're offering. That shows you that we're trending upwards in the, in the amount of participants. Next slide. At the Falls Avenue Senior Center, they currently have 616 seniors registered to my senior center during the fiscal year. They had 492 seniors registered. This represents 123 increase in memberships from a year ago. From January 13th, 2024, which is when they began to enter people and activities into the My Senior Center software, to March 4th, 2024, we averaged almost 50 seniors per day who attended activities. Attendance increase increases about 10% on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and please note that you will see a slight drop off in January, November, and December due to weather, snowbirds, and, and snowbirds also go south. From January 13th, 2023 to March 4th, 2024, we offered 3,3,461 events at the senior center during, during almost 20,000 hours of activities. The highest category of attendance of 6,844 hours is public services. This category includes energy assistance applications, 70 of which were completed so far, and social services. We had persons log into my, send, My Senior Center 274 times to discuss your social service issue. Our regularly scheduled activities reflect almost 6,000 hours. The third highest activity attended is socializing. That means that seniors enjoy coming to the senior center daily to meet with their friends. The fourth highest attended, attended category is our special events that we hold on Fridays. Lastly, we have seen an increase in senior bus rides for two quarters in the past year. In the first quarter of 2023, we made 555 one-way trips compared to 2022. In the second quarter, we made 487 one-way trips over 290, over 298 in 2022. In the third quarter, we made 391 way trips. And then finally, in the fourth quarter, we made 558 one-way trips over 453 in 2022. And just to talk briefly about our social services and food bank, we have 21,559 clients that are active in the, that visit the food bank. There's a typo in that sentence there. 793 clients contact our office for other services. April through October, we assisted renters with their renters rebates, and they served around 250 clients. In November, we assisted 115 families, 293 individuals with Thanksgiving dinners. In December, we assisted 151 families, 292 individuals with Christmas baskets, children with toys, 118. Heating assistance, families, family, 15 families were sent 100 gallons each, and we serviced and repaired a furnace. We have 78 applicant, 78 energy applications at the social services, and the Munson phone, the Munson Fund, which was established to help people with outstanding medical bills, was utilized by 18 clients.
Talk to us about any increases in your budget and why they're there.
Thank you. There aren't many increases. One of the increases that I'm, that are notable are the pesticides in, in the Crestbrook That is, is largely due to inflation and what's happened with, with fertilizer and things of that nature, commodities of the like. And we're asking for, I mentioned in my opening statement about the 50th anniversary. We'd like to really promote the 50th anniversary through that, obtain some sponsors, and maybe do a gala at the end, start it with a breakfast, and, and have all of the divisions within the Parks and Recreation Department and some outreach with economic development, have even businesses in town tie in to the 50th anniversary celebration of Crestbrook.
Anyone have questions? Yes.
A couple of follow-ups on those two points. So I'm looking at, under where it says advertising and then Crestbrook 50th Anniversary. Are those two things tied together, or is the advertising a separate thing? Because you have currently $1,500 in the budget for advertising, and you want to go up to $11,500, so that's obviously a sizable increase. And then obviously, there's nothing in the budget for the 50th anniversary, but that's 15,000. So are those two things connected, or if not, why such a large increase for the advertising?
Well, the, the, we might even, it's, it's kind of a placeholder, because we don't exactly know what the 250, what the fifth, I'm sorry, what the 50th celebration is going to look at. It's going to require collaboration amongst people in my staff, and the town manager, and, and the Economic Development Commissioner, when we finally get them on board, and how much outreach we want to be able to do through this project.
Okay, okay. And then you just mentioned something about the, the pesticides. So the chemicals for the golf course was a, you know, very large percent increase, and then you've got the pesticides as well. So you, that's just, that's just inflation, or what, what, what exactly has led to that very large increase?
That really is just, it would speak to just inflation. Percentage increase since 2019.
Since 2000.
Madam Chairwoman, can I add a little, in fairness to Mr. Ganim, he did not create most of his budget. We did some last minute tweaks after he got here. So that line item specifically around the pesticides was an, it was an unequal line item. So every year, we were putting an extra $20,000 or more into that line item to equal it out, so it was taken from other line items to adjust that. So as I went through the budget, I tried to look at, at what we've actually spent from the past year. We added that, and then when Mr. Ganim came in, we looked at that, and that's, there's also an increase for, you know, economic changes. So that's the reason why we've adjusted that budget.
Okay.
Particularly for those line items.
Okay, so even though it only says that expenses to date is 5,323, you're saying that you, that we've really been spending closer to $25,000 every year?
We've been overspending that line item. So actually, you're not going to see the actuals from 20, actually, is it, is the actual?
You're missing the whole spring that's still to come. That number's going to go up a lot.
I don't know, I think it's.
I could give you further detail onto why we adjusted these line items, if you'd like, just so I could show you what we looked at. So as of February 12th, we spent $46,000 in that line item.
So $15,000.
And I'm, and I'm not sure if we're looking at the same item as I'm saying that, so let's start with the one you asked about.
I was looking at under purchased services, pesticides.
Under which, under which budget?
Crestbrook.
Crestbrook.
Page 24.
Yep.
Yes, thank you, Mary Ann, page 24.
So most of our, just so you know, most of our pesticides are applied in the spring so that it works throughout. So most of our expenditures are going to happen, you know, over the next few months.
Right.
So that, that does play into the, the equation. So agriculture and botanical was the other line item in Crestbrook that was underfunded. So I did try to realign that so it showed appropriately what the actual cost was from last year, and then we added some for the increase in costs.
Okay, so, sorry, I just want to make sure I'm fully understanding this and, and what you're saying. So basically, even though under the chemicals for the golf course, which is, is the current request is $75,000, even though it says the one-year estimate was $47,000, you're saying that we really were spending closer to $75,000, and that money was moved from different line items in the budget to that line item because we were spending more than what was budgeted?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, that's, that's what I thought. And I had a, I had a question about what is meant by the golf pro cart commission? I just wasn't sure. That's under the purchase services on page 24.
So basically, and the chairman could correct me if I'm wrong, that's a commission that's paid to our golf pro for cleaning up the carts afterwards, and I'm not sure what the dollar amount is.
The golf, the golf pro is given a stipend for every cart that goes out. It's part of the contract that we negotiated with the golf pro. And base salary is low, but it's commissioned on how many carts are used, so it's up to him to push the golf carts, whereas, I believe, it's a dollar a cart.
Okay, yeah, I remember you talking about that before. Yeah, okay, thank you. That, um, and, that was all. Well, somebody else has a question. I can come back.
I do. One other increase on page 24, under equipment and improvements. The pickup truck allotment almost doubles. Is that going to be a purchase or lease of a new vehicle?
I'm sorry, can you hear?
The pickup truck allotment almost doubles. Will that be an addition of a new vehicle? Yeah.
That because? We, we've already, that, that vehicle's already been acquired.
Okay.
Correct?
So when that was put through in last year's budget, it was, it was a low amount for the lease. This appropriately reflects what the lease payment will be for the next three years.
Okay, thank you.
So it should have been divided up a little bit differently, and the payment would have been reduced if we had done that upfront.
Anyone else? And that covers social services.
Oh, sorry. Wait, are we doing, are we? Have we, have we done senior center, or are we coming back to that?
Do you have anything more to say regarding the senior center?
No, I do welcome you to visit the, the QR code that's on it, that which will bring you to all the activities and events that are happening at the senior center as well. I didn't want to bring those on a slideshow to show you those, the activities that we're doing, or the park facilities. You're all aware of the parks.
Okay, so I do have some questions about that then. Okay, so have we hired an assistant senior center coordinator yet?
I believe we should be hearing any day as to whether or not our offer was accepted to the, to the personnel.
Okay. And then the line, that's the senior center operator, I believe those are the bus drivers, correct?
Which, which page?
Oh, sorry, this is on page 21, under the senior center. The third line down, third row down is senior center operator. And so it's.
I apologize, I don't, don't have that page.
So I could give you a little more. I apologize for the back and forth, but, you know, Mr. Ganim and I sat today to try and coordinate this better, and it didn't work out as well as I thought it would. I'd be happy to answer some of the questions regarding.
Well, let me, let me be more specific with my question before you jump in. I just, it's 70,000 has been budgeted and requested, but it's, expense to date is only 28,000. So I'm just curious about, is, is it expected that we will actually spend 70,000 in this current fiscal year?
It is not, but we have received a letter from, I'm just trying to, the white collar union to address these two individuals, so we do need some room for flexibility, for negotiations to increase the hours of our bus drivers. They wanted, they petitioned the Labor Department to bring them into the union. So we did leave that number high to address any issues or changes, because we just can't figure out what that's going to be at this point.
Didn't we just already approve an hourly wage increase for them?
You did, but what they did was they petitioned the state to join the union.
After we did that.
After we did that. So we're obligated to negotiate that through the state. What we did through our labor attorney was go to the union and say, can we leave this open and work through it during our negotiations, which are currently underway.
I had a question about the vehicle maintenance line that has gone up to $9,000. Is that the buses?
That's correct. So we have one bus that is in need of quite a bit of repair. We have a newer bus that we received through the grant. Mr. Ganim has just jumped on the grant application to go after an additional bus so that we could replace the older one. I believe it's a 2012 or 13 that needs to be replaced. So we needed to update that amount to cover any of the costs to keep the bus on the road.
Okay. And then I had a question about the special events and programs. We budgeted 10,000, it's staying at 10,000, but we're at 4,516 right now, so we're not even halfway through that line item. Are there, are you going to spend 10,000 this year, or are there some bigger events that are going to be more costly coming up, or?
I, I, go ahead, Mark.
So the reason why we left that, and I left added that item, is because when we increased that line item last year, it was under the impression that we are going to continue to increase what we offer through the senior center. That's the largest demographic that's growing in our town, and I thought it'd be appropriated to keep that line item at that level. With that being said, it was also stated that we're going to stay flat for a little while because we need to catch up and understand exactly the effect of what we're spending. So I did leave that line item flight, flat, and I, I don't know whether we'll spend through it, but I certainly think that that's something that we should keep up to address that demographic.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on social services, parks, recreations, senior center, as well as anything with Crestbrook?
No, I just had a similar question, similar to Rachel's last question regarding the recreation supplies. We're not.
Again, that was a bone of contention last year, where a lot of, where we had a lot of discussions surrounding, surrounding that line item, and I would maintain that, again, you know, we brought this with, when the new, she's not new any longer, but our, our senior center director, when we brought her in, we talked about that we wanted to expand the programs for this demographic. And again, I think that that's fun. And again, I think that that's funded appropriately. If we find that we go a year or two and we're not spending it, then we're going to reduce it and probably, you know, absorb it somewhere else in the budget which needs it. But at this point, I feel strongly that we should support that budget line item and that demographic of our citizens.
Anyone else?
I did actually have another, I had, sorry, I had to go back to the parks.
I'm ready for a softball one. Anytime you're ready.
I play field hockey and lacrosse, which are hard balls, Mark.
Watch out.
Okay, so I know that we've been looking for a new laborer for the Parks Department for a number of years. I see that's in the budget for 55,000, and you approved it, so that's.
So that was, if I remember correctly, it was listed twice in the budget. We actually moved it from, I believe it was listed new labor, we just moved it into the laborer's position.
Okay.
So we did hire somebody, they've been working in that position, and we did reduce the temporary salaries appropriately, but I think this year we may have brought it up a little bit because we still were not able to get all the work done.
I see.
Yeah.
Did I see one more hand down there?
No, I'm upset.
No, sir?
Yeah, that's it for me.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you very much. Thank you. We're moving on to finance.
Good evening, everyone. I will go through the finance departments, any major increases or decreases, and then any questions you have afterwards. I have up on the screen there the current year budget and then the requested budget for fiscal year '25. Starting with the finance department administration, there is a 2.75% increase for the supervisors, and White Collar has no increase at this point because they are in negotiations, their contract ends June 30th. So there was increases in those salaries only. The legal and fiscal increase of 3,745 is due to the three-year agreement we have with our auditors, and there's a decrease in our bank fees. Were there any questions regarding the administration part?
I do have a question.
Sure.
I'm seeing a difference between the, for 2025, the department requested column and the town manager recommended column. I'm seeing a difference of over 16,000, but I'm not seeing any difference in the line items.
Okay, so with this nuclear gov, we had to build this report that you're all looking at now, and when it was turned into an Excel, subtotals did not have any formulas in them. So we had to spot-check all of them, and that's the one that got missed.
Thank you.
But they all had to be rechecked because there were no formulas brought into the subtotals, and then therefore the totals and the grand totals all had to be adjusted.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Onto the tax collector.
I'm sorry, Sue, I have one question. So the temporary salary is 68,000, 68,300 is what, Mark, you were talking about before having Sue stay on?
Correct, yes.
And it was, I believe, nine to 12 months, and just sort of depending on?
The needs, correct.
The needs, okay, okay, great, thank you.
The tax office is similar, only salary increases the one supervisor in that department. The other two White Collar employees are the same until their contracts is resolved. They have very little increases and decreases in their total budget that actually nets out at the bottom, so I would say no changes for them. The assessors, one supervisor with a 2.75 increase, the other two are White Collar employees. We have no property revalue this year, so that line item is zeroed out. Printing and binding has gone up just due to inflation and costs, and the maintenance agreements have gone the same way, just because of inflation. At the very bottom, they are looking for one new printer, and that printer will be for the public upfront when they come in and need copies made. Any questions on the assessor? All set?
I do have a question. And I'm sorry, Sue, if you mentioned this. I'm seeing a decrease for the administrative assistant, is that a reduction in hours?
So that position is split with the Public Works Administrative Assistant. So this is for 25 hours, and then the other 10 hours is over in the Public Works budget. Thank you. You're welcome. And next, I have Mike Simmons here to go over the IT budget. Mike?
Thank you, men of chair and council members. Now before you is the IT budget. The IT budget is forever-changing, as we know the needs in IT and cybersecurity enforcement. Dylan and Sue have been working on to keep this budget as low as possible. Unfortunately, we do have some increases due to the new software the town manager proposed that will save the town some time and money, so that's all affected. We have a few changes in the PD, maintenance costs in infrastructure due to changes in security and some upgrades needed. We can go through the budget, how would you like to proceed on the budget as far as the categories or lines, or what questions might you have?
If you can give some highlights on some of the larger changes, that would be appreciated.
Excuse me?
Said, if you can just give a quick summary on some of the larger changes in the budget.
Sure, I can do that. In the town maintenance contracts, the majority of the increase was due to the new software the town manager increased. So obviously, we have a year-to-year cost on those that came to $61,000. So it's almost a lateral move, same, we kept everything the same. Besides, some of the Tyler went up a few percents here, from 21 to 26. So a few lateral changes that we normally have due to maintenance and increases that people put upon us. But majority of that is pretty much a lateral increase and kept the same from last year. There was no changes in the office supplies. The IT computer infrastructure. If I look at that number, there. That actually decreased. It was 139,734 last year, now it's down to, if I look at it, 105,000, so we got a $34,000 decrease. This is due to some of the changes we made last year for the infrastructure, the new servers and the storage, and I thank you for the town residents and the council approving that. It made a big difference and allowed for this new software to run on. Without that software, without that increase, last year, we could never get this other software to run properly and some other software policies. So that actually did decrease a little bit. And we have, we increased our overtime by $3,000 due to maintenance and upgrades and other projects we have going on that requires after-hours for some of our techs to do maintenance, so that was increased a little bit. Email hosting is another big increase, which increased $15,000 unfortunately. Microsoft policy changes are forcing water town to include the office apps. They are sunsetting the office apps, the Word and the Excel, a lot sooner than we would before due to a fact we had 38 machines on one of the maintenance leases that now we'd have to replace 38 copies of Microsoft Office at $400 a copy. By doing the 15,000 per year, we substantially decreased that number, even though it sounds like it's a little higher, but it also adds a lot more features, and Microsoft is driving a lot of towns to go that route. It doesn't make sense to buy outright the office anymore. The next increase we have is the auto video budget, which increased by $10,000. Due to some of the problems we've had with the town council chambers and the microphone system, we first looked at a full-fledged replacement, and we cut it by $10,000. So the $10,000 will be improvements and upgrades for the system. We're going to try to hold on to the system another year. I think it is a stable system and just need some upgrades to make it work right. The PD maintenance contracts went up by $54,000, includes some security cameras and other improvements on the security of the PD that were necessary. And I can't really get into too much without getting into confidential and what we're doing, what we're not doing, and what we're covering. Lastly, the maintenance grid in the PD, we've taken on, again, for the PD, we've taken on another $77,000 on the maintenance agreements of the infrastructure, which includes, again, the cameras and everything else. Any questions? I know I went through it very quickly and hopefully I covered everything. Any questions?
Under the computer infrastructure IT police, there's a line for hardware, and 114,600 was requested, and 70,600 was approved by the town manager. What hardware was that, and what's why the difference in the?
All right, so we're at the.
Page three, bottom line.
Yeah, sorry. Very bottom of page three.
So you're looking at the infrastructure, the hardware?
Yes.
And the hardware?
There's like nothing currently budgeted.
Yeah, it's broken down, last year we broke it down to 70. It's weird how gov connection, or the ClearGov broke it down. I can give you a more example of my spreadsheet I made because I knew that would come in play. And look at the maintenance grid and the computer maintenance contracts, infrastructure. So the infrastructure last year was 57,300. This year, it went up to. Let's get to the right page, 77. 67%. To 95,000. So 57 to 95 was due to. We have a.
Can I add a little bit to this, maybe it'll help clarify it? So we're talking about the sheet that was given to the town council, and we're going to need to answer those questions associated with what's in front of them. So basically, I don't speak computer language, so IT came to me with their budget, and I told them, your budget's too high, you have to figure out where you need to cut it. So Mr. Simmons went into his budget, and under the hardware, under computer infrastructure, he cut that amount from 114 to 6 to help me bring the budget down a little bit less. If we had an unlimited budget, I wouldn't have done that, and we would have allowed him to move forward. So Mike, if you could address the hardware specifically under computer infrastructure IT police, that's the line item the council person is talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like we're talking about a new hardware request, since there's nothing previously budgeted for this amount. So I'm just wondering, what is the specific hardware that was requested for 114,600? Is it at the very bottom of page three of this?
Yeah, this is like a summary, I broke it down in spreadsheets, I have further information on the spreadsheet.
Okay.
So we got the. Specifically what she's talking, this hardware line item right here?
This one?
So we cut, the 114 was your request?
Mm-hmm, down to 70.
And then we cut it down to 76, so identify what was cut.
Computer hardware, let's see. Let me check the line number on my spreadsheet. 108, where is it? Take a second here.
You could, I could get my response later in an email or something, I don't want to hold up.
What's that?
I could take my response in an email or at another meeting, I don't want to hold things up.
Yeah, this is my first time with ClearGov, and I actually have a different way of doing things than ClearGov does, so it's a little bit, I coordinate the two, they all match.
Yeah.
I'm happy with a match, but again, this is a little more detailed than, in summary, it arrives on this side.
Right.
This might be a question for Mark, same topic. Do you know, the dollar amount was reduced, do you know what was taken out?
No, that's what Mike was trying to identify. We'll send out a clarification email regarding that line item to all council members so that we all have the same information.
Yeah. Yeah, I can give you a copy of this spreadsheet, it has the, what's that? Okay, I can email that to you. Again, it has a lot of, what I would say, I think confidential information, explains what services we use, how we go about our security, which I wouldn't now make public for obvious reasons.
Right.
So it's kind of summarized a little bit. Any other questions this time?
I have a question. I'm not sure whether I should ask Sue this. I'm assuming we still carry cyber insurance?
Absolutely, we do, yes.
It's not under the IT budget, where is it?
It's in, when we get to miscellaneous town stuff, it's all in with the package insurance.
Okay, I thought it might be there, but I looked for it, I didn't see it, but that's okay.
It's all under one line item under package.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you. Number seven, tax collector.
No, we have debt service next?
No.
Oh.
Page 21.
Sorry.
So debt service actually comes in two different parts. You have page 21 of the large document, that's the general fund debt service, and then in your packet, there was a one sheet for the debt service fund, and I'll explain what that is. These payments are structured by our financial advisor on all our outstanding bonds. All the 506-1O in the beginning are all the principal payments, and 506-2Os are the interest payments on all these bonds. If you then go to the document that was in your packet, there is debt service fund. When we went out for bonding last year, we were given a premium, so we're using that additional funds to pay down the debt. I think Lauren has it up there somewhere. Is there another page, Lauren? There we go. So it's Fund 220 Debt Service, that's the dollar amount that we received in premium payments during the bond sale, so we're going to use that to pay off some of the debt this year. So it takes it away from the general fund side. Any questions?
On that?
I have a question. Sue, what is the general fund's current balance?
Oh, I don't have that off the top of my head, I can get that to you for, it'll be the end of last fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll get that to you. So you're looking for the fund balance, current fund balance?
I'm sorry?
Current fund balance?
Yes, please, yes.
Any other questions? Where do we get the information for all the, our pilot money we get from the town?
We do have a, we're reviewing revenue, let's see, on March 18.
We do have a, we're reviewing revenue, let's see, on March 18th, and that will all be listed in the general fund revenue.
Okay, thanks.
As far as debt service and our bond rating, do we expect to get another rating prior to issuing any new bonds?
Yes, we will have to.
And when do we expect that might occur?
We don't, I, we'll probably have to go out again in June or July, which would be 12 months from the last one, to bond some of the bands that we took out, and then we will have to go for another rating review at that point.
Yes, seeing none, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Move on the agenda to item C.
I move to authorize, I move to authorize an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $15,986 for the purchase of junior fire corp uniforms. Funds received from the purchase of uniforms through Safer Grant from FEMA.
We have a motion and a second, does anyone have a question? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $8,835.24 for tax refunds.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the tax refunds.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we move on to public participation. Anyone that would like to address the council, please come forward.
Good evening, Denise Ross, 135 Porter Street, Watertown. Can I talk about what was presented tonight through the department ads?
Of course.
Okay, I just have one question. If I recall correctly, it was last year or the year before, it was mentioned that all the maintenance agreements were all going to go under the IT department, so they had it just in one area. But going through the budget, I see maintenance agreements in a few other departments, so I'm a little confused.
Okay.
I can only assume that the maintenance agreements that were talked about for the IT were rated to, related to IT and computer-related maintenance agreements, not maintenance agreements on equipment and vehicles and things of that nature that would be in all those other budget line items.
Like a maintenance agreement on a copy machine wouldn't be in the IT budget.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Catherine Camroth, 31 Cottage Place. I was going to ask you about the appointment of Jeremy James Johnson, because you did say, I did read your minutes, and I noticed that John Nigren, it said that the Democrats have told you that John Nigren was a Democrat, they talked about that, but I did notice for Mr. Johnson, there was nothing as far as it said he wasn't independent. Now you're telling us that there is a correction that he's unaffiliated, which is great, because we have been asking for years to get unaffiliated people on boards or commissions, so how did it happen?
His name was just given to us as someone that had experience in the area that we were looking for.
Okay, so his name was given to who?
Me.
Okay, so is, so there's a lot of people who are unaffiliated who could get on boards and commissions, and we've been told like there's no way to do this. So if they want to be on a board or commission, do they just give their name to you?
Well, they could submit the name to the council, certainly.
Okay, because this is new, we've never talked about this, it just kind of happened. We've never heard that anybody could submit, unaffiliates could submit their names to...
Feel free.
All right, well, let's put that in the newspaper and get some people on these boards and commissions, because I've been saying all along, if you don't let the unaffiliates on, this is why we're so shorthanded, so we're going to get the word out, for sure. Thank you for that. I also noticed in your packet, there was a memo that had gone out to the town staff. It's, you know, it's interesting, but what I did notice towards the end is that it said that it seemed like a small reminder, and I was kind of surprised by that because I didn't consider it a small reminder, I thought it was a big reminder, but what bothers me is, and maybe it's not appropriate to put it in the memo, is if there's no consequences to behavior, people don't tend to change it, and I don't see that there's any consequences that would happen if people don't change, go against this, what's in this memo that's being asked of the staff. And I do know of several complaints that have been filed that have gone unanswered, including one of mine, and so I just feel like if there's no consequences to anything, then I don't see why anybody would bother to change their behavior. I also want to ask, tomorrow night, there's a meeting, and it doesn't say if the public can participate, so I don't know if that's just, I mean, we're invited, but are we invited just to listen, or do we have any opportunity?
Just to listen.
Okay, so there's definitely not, okay.
No public participation.
Okay. And lastly, I mean, this is kind of a strange thing, but at the meeting where we couldn't hear anything, it was noticed that your signs are like right in front of your mouths, so even though tonight I could hear you, and I don't have a hearing issue, but I kind of, I think we all kind of read lips a little bit, so sometimes it's hard to hear you or understand what you're saying. I'm just kind of asking, maybe you can all push your sign off to the side and we can kind of see what you're saying. Honestly, there's times we don't see your mouth at all, so I just thought maybe that...
If our chairs were a little higher, it wouldn't be a issue.
Oh, that too, I can hardly see your mouth right now, so I don't know, maybe there's a solution to that, but it does help us, I think, if we could see your mouth. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to be three inches taller.
Yeah. Everybody bring a pillow next time.
Or you can get softer chairs. Al Mickel, 95 Woodbine Avenue, I've always been interested in the budget, I've always, always asked for an electronic copy of it, and I did, and I received it on Friday. I didn't know where the Crestbrook budget was, it wasn't available on Friday. I went, looked several places online. It must be a very fluid situation that the budget changes over the weekend. If it does change, I'd like to be updated on it, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close public participation.
Do we have a motion?
Shall move, second.
All in favor of a journey?
Aye.
Aye.
Recording stopped.